Dwelling unit section, so Jen, I will let you take it from here.
Okay, so yes, the next topic for consideration is accessory dwelling units. And proposes changes, or excuse me, proposed changes occur in the accessory uses and structures chapter. Proposed amendments are numbers 20 through 24 and include removing the conditional use process and allowing ADUs to be permitted by right in all zoning districts, but still maintaining a notification process for those parcels closest to the proposed ADU. So, over the past five years, there have been a total of 24 ADU applications, 17 were conditional use, and the city council has approved every request without any substantial conditions. Each conditional use request has required a lot of time, staff time, to coordinate, report, and record the city council decision, so making this change will simplify the process and represent a major efficiency for land use planners and applicants while still keeping surrounding neighbors informed. So notification will occur for detached and internal addition ADUs in certain zones wherever conditional use was required. A second amendment will clarify the parking space required when developing an ADU can be used by any unit on the parcel, not just dedicated to the sole use of the new ADU. And the last proposed amendment regarding ADUs will require the unit be posted with a street address according to the city fire code. New units are often frequently placed behind or within other units which can make it difficult for emergency personnel to find them, and having a standard address will help in that. So moving into the specifics, the first amendment removes the list of criteria that could be used as additional factors to be considered when an ADU went through the conditional use process. The next set of amendments look like a lot of edits, but it's actually a lot of consolidation of regulations that were separated based on the type of ADU and whether an ADU was permitted by right or conditional in specific zoning districts. So as proposed, all three types of ADUs will be allowed by right in all zoning districts, and the language in section A is simplified to say that. Section B becomes a notification process for those ADUs that were previously required to go through the conditional use process and amends the notification area from 150 feet to the surrounding adjacent neighbors. Subsection C is new and requires development services to follow up with a second notification to adjacent neighbors, as was suggested by a couple of council members, and this amendment was included after consultation with staff. So these diagrams will be included to help explain which parcels should receive the notification regarding the proposed ADU. So as you look at this, right in the center would be the parcel where your ADU is being created. Notification would occur on each of these, in these different examples. The first amendment on this slide shows the change allowing any dwelling unit on-site to use the new parking space required with the new ADU. The next amendment creates design feature paragraph. Removal of the conditional use process also removes the ability for the city council to review a project for additional design features like finished materials, roof pitch, and trim, so the proposed amendment allows the zoning officer to take on that role previously done by the city council. And then the rest of this section will be lettered appropriately. This slide shows the amendment requiring the new ADU to provide an address compliant with the city fire code. And then comments received regarding amendments to the accessory dwelling unit includes general support from the housing and community development office for proposed amendments to facilitate the equitable development of ADUs in Missoula, and those comments also supported removal of the conditional use process and for administrative review of design features for accessory dwelling units. Councilwoman Jones provided comment in opposition to the removal of the conditional use process. She sees the conditional use process as a social contract and feels the process has been valuable for creating community dialogue and that it needs to continue. Another comment was received from a group of concerned residents also expressing opposition to removal of the conditional use process. They expressed concern that removal of that process will remove a crucial component, pardon me, of the ADU process. It'll remove safeguards put in place and will weaken the process. And then the last comment regarding ADUs was received from the Missoula Organization of Realtors, supporting proposed amendments to the section with the most important amendment being the removal of the conditional use process. And that is the end of the presentation for accessory dwelling units.
Any other comment from staff? Okay, is, comments from the public?
Again, Heather McMylin with Homeward, also resident of the Franklin Fort neighborhood. I want to go on the record for Homeward and myself personally that I do support the amendments and the ADU, being an easier product to use, but yet still having to go through a permitting process, the safety pieces with the fire department with an address, all of that makes sense. I may be being a little more emphatic about this than necessary with this particular change, but the ADU is a critical tool for us to use as affordable housing providers and also at a market rate level. I moved to Missoula in 1998, bought my house in the Franklin Fort neighborhood, and I had an illegal ADU in my basement, and that's the only way as an architectural intern I afforded myself to buy a home, and recently turned it into University of Kentucky basketball room, but it's how I got started. And I, before this meeting, left my friends in the university neighborhood who moved with their kids to their second home, their final home, and they have an ADU that they went through the conditional use and the permitting and all those pieces, and they have an ADU and they afford a very nice home in the university neighborhood, and there's an adjunct professor living in that unit right now. So this tool works. There are ADUs all over this city, they've been there for years, there are a lot in the university neighborhood. I feel on multiple income levels. It's a very useful tool, and again, it's walking through a permitting process, there are requirements, there are contractual relationships. I just don't think the end of the conditional use process, which is super onerous and also caused some financing problems for the individuals on Beverly that used it. They weren't able to close their permanent financing without a lot of work by city staff and even having something voted on at city councils. So I think that it will make it a more readily-used tool, and it will, they will be permitted instead of illegally set up and used in all kinds of districts all over the city. So it's not just affordable housing, but it's again, like the townhomes, providing varieties of housing types will help our overall equation here in Missoula.
Thank you. Don't see other members of the public, so I will close the public hearing and open it up to planning board members. Yes, Peter?
Is ownership of the ACU an issue in this at all? I mean, can someone else purchase the ACU after the fact?
Are you saying ADU, accessory dwelling unit?
Sorry, ADU.
No.
Okay.
No. There needs to be a primary unit if there's going to be an accessory dwelling unit, and then there's one owner, and then the owner needs to spend a certain amount of time in one of the units on-site.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
I would like to say that I'm in favor of all of the changes here. You know, my city councilwoman is Gwen Jones, and she, you know, is pretty against it. There is some pressure in the Rose Park neighborhood from folks who are unhappy with removal of the conditional use process, but I think it's been in place long enough in Missoula, and it does kind of bring the legality to light, because I agree with Heather, you know, they happen anyway, so you might as well know where the fire can be. And so, you know, I think this is just a keeping up with the times move, and I'm for that.
I completely concur on all things. Gwen is also my city councilwoman, and I understand the concern, but I feel like these provide really good options for folks and make a lot of sense, so I'm supporting it as well.
Other comments? Otherwise, I'm happy to hear a motion to approve.
I'll approve.
Thank you, Vince. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Stephanie, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, I'm gonna go with just a voice vote on this one. All those in favor of the proposed amendments to the accessory dwelling units, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving right along to building as a sign.
So yes, next topic is building as a sign, and so first I'd like to explain why we're addressing this and what we mean by it. So while working on the design, excuse me, the Missoula Design Excellence Project, concerns were raised over the potential for buildings to be designed as signs. So essentially, as a, building as a sign is when the architecture of the building becomes the sign. For example, you could remove the logo of the sign at the top right up here, and you could still know that this is a Verizon store, just based on the architecture of the building. Whereas if you came down to this building down here and removed the sign off of this building, you wouldn't be able to say that that was specifically a Verizon building. And then, so rather the goal is to see signage developed as subordinate to the building, like that bottom one there. And then we'll go over the definition of building as a sign a little bit farther in the terminology section. So during the Design Excellence Project process, the consultants summarized input and analysis on our existing code and recommended directions for addressing community characteristics by developing and presenting a strategy report. So this report was reviewed by the community last fall and presented to the Land Use and Planning Committee of the city last November. Recommendations from the strategy report set us up for addressing building as a sign citywide and as a part of this annual amendment process. The report also recommended we take the approach of establishing thresholds for the use of corporate color in building design, and you'll find we carry that concept throughout these amendments. Our approach to address the concerns raised over the potential for buildings to be designed as a sign is to start with our existing requirements and look at ways to make adjustments and clarifying conditions, also to create a new set of measurement rules and thresholds for reviewing signage that has to do with evaluating the relationship of the building to corporate color, lighting, and architectural details. For those reasons, you'll see that we're editing the prohibited sign section, revising and adding to the special sign section, including greater detail in the measurement rules and adding new definitions. The amendments relating to building as a sign are numbers 25 through 32 in your packet, and we start with the prohibited sign section. Missoula's dark sky ordinance addresses limitations on tube lighting but not exposed bulbs that may be used to outline and essentially turn features of a building or an entire building into a sign. The amendment to L puts the exposed bulb restriction back into the code with greater detail and provides an exception for residential use or for temporary strings applied to buildings, and does not affect the ability to light trees or other features not on the building. And then including amendments M through O make it clear that these types of signs are not permitted unless they receive approval in accordance with the sign, pardon me, with the section on special signs, which is 75-100. There are several amendments we're proposing for the section dealing with special signs reviewed by the design review board. Proposed edits to subsection A clarify conditions for when certain sign types may only be permitted after and approved by the design review board. This built a stronger relationship between this section and the prohibited sign section I just reviewed with you. Amendments to the special sign section B begin with some cleanup. So by steering us away from having to make findings for an aesthetically superior sign, striking reference to aesthetically superior and removing the aesthetically superior signs category, this category was never used when requests are made to the design review board, and it can be too subjective in its review. The most common requests for design review board are based on reviews as a comprehensive sign package in which the applicant is seeking relief from some measurement restriction in order to develop a complete comprehensive sign package. An existing subsection intended to deal with signs as part of a building has regulations that are essentially the approach used to evaluate comprehensive sign packages and has been retained with the title Comprehensive Sign Package, and I'll show you that on the next slide. The subsection titled Sign as Part of a Building is reworded and references new measurement techniques for when a building may be considered a sign and may require a design review board for consideration. To start off this section, we are proposing an additional staff recommended statement to address the intent, and you can see that there in blue. A new definition is also added to the terminology section, which will be shown in a next slide, to clarify what we mean by building as sign. So again, this is something you haven't seen yet. This is staff's recommended addition. So as I mentioned earlier, this existing language was under signs as part of a building, and there hadn't been a section called Comprehensive Sign Package yet. That is the title we gave most of the projects that went through the design review board using these regulations. And this existing language is being titled Comprehensive Sign Package again. Some additional explanation of what should be addressed is also added. No changes were made to number three, special districts, so that's not being shown. The existing historic, artistic, and landmark sign section previously only addressed existing signs and allowed them to continue and be maintained. The subsection is renamed and proposed edits to expand the concept of heritage signs to allow new recreations of heritage accurate signs. A definition of heritage sign is also added in the terminology chapter with an emphasis that this type of sign reflect the heritage of the Missoula community. Amendments to subsection four continue on this slide and address renaming the section and add a commentary for submittal information. Amendments to the building graphics section help emphasize the only time signs fitting this category can be considered is when they have been reviewed and approved by the design There are several amendments proposed to section 2075-170 dealing with measurement rules. So this next amendment is number 28 in the packet. We're adding a new sign type, which is called panel sign, which is similar to box signs but essentially flat. Addressing panel signs helps complete the list of commonly-used signs and helps clarify, pardon me, how to measure them. The section also clarifies that background color contributes to the extent of the sign and should be counted in the measurement for wall signage, and the definition of panel sign is covered later. So this will be your new... This amendment includes clarifying language and figures added to the channel letter measurement section. The existing regulation already states that background color should be a consideration in forming the overall measurement for the wall sign, and these amendments serve to clarify that corporate color is what is considered the background color unless the color is muted. In some cases, when the background wall color is the same as the channel letter sign, the measurement would be the entire wall. This new illustration and text, which is added to figure 2075-3, help to describe the amendment that I was just describing for channel letters. A new subsection D under 2075-170 is planned in order to show examples of how various sign types would be applied to a facade, and this text introduces the new diagrams This section is included to provide examples of how to measure a sign on a facade, taking into consideration background or corporate and logo color, and after this section, the subsection and figures are renumbered. A new subsection H is added for describing the measurement thresholds when considering buildings as a sign, and we start with subsection 1, which is a description and consideration After that, we go to the first tier of treatment for corporate color and architectural detailing with this new subsection 2. Scenarios A and B show limited use of corporate color as accent, trim, sign, and canopies, and this would be able to be reviewed and approved administratively. Subsections 3 and 4 provide regulations for when a project requires greater consideration or may not be permitted. The planning board proposal states that the DRB would review and make the decision on the moderate use of corporate color, but since then, we've considered the approach we plan to take for design review with the Design Excellence Project and realized we could use the same approach for this subsection. So through the Design Excellence Project, we heard a lot of interest in using development services staff as the entity to determine design review and call upon the design review board as necessary. Additionally, we received comment from Winter &amp; Company recommending that administrative review, to the extent feasible, will help to expedite administering these standards while also providing a path to refer to design proposals to the design review board upon request. So with that in mind, we're recommending additional amendments, again, shown in blue. There's one here, and there's one here, to allow administrative determinations on the extent of corporate color integrated into the design. These two scenarios illustrate the regulations in subsection H and 3 that were just on the The final two subsections of H deal with measurement rules for building as a sign and are intended to further address architectural design features with subsection 5 and submittal material with subsection 6. We're asking that exterior wall color, exterior lighting schemes, and color and logos associated with the business trademark be submitted. Finally, the other amendments related to building as a sign are in the terminology chapter. Revising the definition of building graphics helps reinforce the fact that building graphics cannot contain any commercial message, may be artistic in nature, and should reflect the heritage of Missoula. New terminology for corporate color and building as sign are included to help support and define how corporate color and the building architecture is used for signage, and these amendments also tie into the Design Excellence Project. New language in the definition of sign area helps a reader know there may be situations when a sign will be required to include background color in the area calculation. The definition of heritage sign is added to work with a section that currently exists in the signs special review section, and including a definition of panel sign helps distinguish it from all other signs and supports amendments made in other portions of Title Comments concerning buildings as a sign. Those include a comment from Winter &amp; Company, and as noted earlier, Development Services has been working with Winter &amp; Company regarding the Design Excellence Project, creating design guidelines for Missoula's corridors. Winter &amp; Company provided comment in support of the proposed amendments in the building as a sign section, including the suggestion to add administrative review language regarding the amount of corporate colors used in the proposed project. A second comment was received from DVD Architecture and Planning, saying building as a sign terminology should be struck from the proposed amendments. He feels it's vague and will be abused by staff and neighbor complaint. He also had concern regarding the need for staff to review color schemes. And then the last comment was received from the Missoula Organization of Realtors and included concern regarding muted corporate colors being viewed more favorably. This seems contrary to the themes gleaned from the Design Excellence public outreach that Missoulians want diverse buildings. And that concludes the building as a sign presentation.
Thank you, Jen. There are no members of the public present, so I will close the public hearing and open it up to the planning board. Who wants to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
This is a hard one for me, and the same worry I have about design excellence is just, we're leaving a lot up to interpretation of the design review board, and yes, the Verizon building's ugly, but a Pizza Hut is readily identified when you see one. And so there's just a lot of wording in here that leaves things up to interpretation, same thing. And I could be a wise guy and ask you to tell me what a scintillating sign is that you want to prohibit, but just like that, animated, flashing, blinking, or scintillating signs. That's up to whoever decides they're looking at it and says, well, that sign is scintillating. There's just a lot of words like that in there, which, you know, certainly we want, you know, it says reflect the character of Missoula, and that's also up for definition, character of Missoula to so many people. I understand people don't want things like the Verizon store. It's ugly, and maybe things like that could be addressed with lighting ordinances or neon ordinances or something, but that's my opinion.
Other comments? Go ahead, Vince.
I mean, there was a section in here that sort of sought to clarify the restriction on lighting.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
There was a section in the amendments that sought to clarify the types of lighting that are allowed on a building. Are neon lights currently allowed?
Neon lights would be tube lighting, and currently under the dark skies ordinance, you're allowed to have one line of lighting either at the peak of your building or in eve. Anything else that you have as far as that type of lighting needs to be shielded.
I mean, so specifically at the Verizon building, their lighting, that's personally my biggest objection to that building. I mean, is that, would that be prohibited under this? I guess what's not clear to me is I don't see anything in the amendments referring to that, but it seemed like the Verizon building had that type of lighting, neon lighting. Maybe I'm wrong.
No, it doesn't.
Jen, can you point out where tube lighting is addressed? Because I'm not seeing tube lighting specifically in here.
She's saying that.
It's not...
The dark sky ordinance.
The dark skies ordinance actually addresses tube lighting and when it...
Oh, I see, okay.
When it needs to be shielded or not shielded.
Got it, thank you. Yes, LaVell?
So the dark sky ordinance would not prohibit, would not permit the exposed tube lighting that are around all the windows in the Verizon situation. You'd still see a perimeter, like a roofline lighting.
Yeah.
But I think you could only have one of those, so when there's lighting on those other little red caps at the corner, you couldn't do that also.
And this is the existing night sky ordinance?
That was amended in the last couple of years.
Since the Verizon...
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
And so you can still have the lighting, but it has to be shielded.
Okay, that answers my question. It sounds like that type of lighting was addressed in a separate process at the city, and that's why we're not seeing it here.
Right.
I had a quick question, and it's related to a comment from a member of the public who talked about, you know, how corporate colors are used kind of to, by the consumer to identify buildings. And so he used the example of Home Depot, and I'm just confirming that this building is a sign, these building as a sign amendments apply to like enterprise-scale buildings as well, or to specific zoning districts?
No, these amendments are going to be applied citywide.
Right. Okay. So that would presumably really change the way that new buildings could come in on Reserve Street.
It has potential.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Andy?
I've got...
I've got a number of bullets. I'll start out with the Verizon Store. I personally have no issue with the Verizon Store. I kind of always find it interesting that everyone uses it, and that's how this was opened up, is this is the reason we're here. That's the reason Design Excellence, I think, was largely started. Missoula, I thought, was about this diversity in art and that building design and all that, and I'm not an architect, is in the eye of the beholder, and so there's a lot of negative to that. I have no issue with that. That being said, back to the lighting issue, we had talked about some time earlier about the lighting, and I think Helen specifically had mentioned some experience where she goes and there's outdoor lighting and like that. This has potential to be stripping that away, I think. The Design Excellence that was proposed has a specific section about site lighting and says that site lighting is important for safety and should be used to enhance site design. And now we have an ordinance in here that's talking about removing that latitude. I'm not opposed, I'm opposed to the sign sizes because I think it's more restrictive. There's constantly sign variances being proposed as it is. I think they're only going to go up. I think dictating color or leaving that subjective to zoning officer approval is a bad idea. And using like the concept of if you removed architecture, that that would look like a Verizon Building. I guess I don't know that much about Verizon, but I wouldn't have known it if you'd taken Verizon off, then I couldn't have told you what the, I couldn't have identified that. So I have a lot of issues with this, and I don't think there's any way I'll be able to support any of this, but it's my two cents.
Peter?
I was involved in building the Ronald McDonald House and went to McDonald's Corporation to talk about signs and representation and talk to them both about their restaurants across the country and world and the Ronald McDonald Houses. And they are very accommodating with covenants and zoning restrictions around the world and trying to fit into different places. Freeport, Maine is a great example. The whole street in Freeport all looks the same. It's all clapboard, what they call saltbox design by intent. It's to promote tourism, to attract people in in huge quantity. So I think it's a great idea that we have to try and make Missoula a place that has some distinction, and I applaud the efforts to do that. I share some of the concerns that people have, that decreasing diversity and having a group say, this is ugly, we're not going to have it, this is nice, we are going to have it. But I think that the effort of trying to find an answer to this is a good one. I think we need to be able to say, this is what we want Missoula to look like, and we're going to be as diverse as possible to get there. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Peter. Yes, Stephanie.
I'm not sure how I'm going to vote yet, but I do have some issues with some of the proposed amendments. I think that I, you know, I guess the idea of corporate colors, I can see why maybe in the Verizon Store you would want to address it, but I think that under these standards, you know, the Western Cider Store could also be considered building as a sign. It basically looks like one of their cider cans, and I think that that store looks great. I think that there's a lot of sort of smaller, even like the Good Food Store could be considered to have those same colors within their branding, so I guess I am a little concerned about how subjective this is, because again, I do think the diversity of Missoula is important. And I guess by, so I just drove through Salt Lake City on the way a couple days ago, and I'm always struck by there's a couple of areas along the highway there where all the buildings are the same color, and it just gets to this sort of Bozeman-like uniformity of muted colors and everything. I personally find the bottom Verizon Store there to be a more offensive building type. I think it's really boring, it doesn't have anything exciting about it, and just looks like a corporate box. So yeah, I guess I see what we're getting at. I don't know if these amendments get there, though, in my opinion, so I'm still sort of trying to suss that out.
Well, I'll throw one out. I guess, I think this idea of diversity and uniformity is interesting because my concern about a lot of the places, say, that are out on Reserve, you know, to me, they have no character. They're just like, I could be on the edge of Salt Lake, right? So I think the intent of these is to try to give us some control and influence, especially when these big corporations come in with their cookie-cutter buildings. So, you know, does, do these regulations create less diversity or more? And I don't know. I guess I'm hoping that they would create more and that we'd have things, you know, buildings that are more unique, like a McDonald's that isn't necessarily, you know, got the big arches and everything. I'm not quite certain, but it sounds like the Design Excellence Project has really asked people to give a lot of input around these kinds of things, and presumably this is consistent with what's going to come from that. Lavelle, can you comment on this question of diversity and uniformity and some of these issues that have been raised? Or Jen, whoever.
Diversity and uniformity and flexibility, you know. I think that the point of trying to relate to who we are as a community has really risen to the surface, and I think it's, while a Verizon Building or maybe some other building might be something to pinpoint, I take this back a little further than that. I take it back to when we started working on the growth policy in maybe early 2015 or 2014, and we brought in a speaker to talk about, you know, how to focus in a direction of our community. And he talked about techniques and ways to think about, essentially, he called it secrets of a successful community. And a lot of it was about the importance of identifying, you know, what we value and what we see as, you know, key characteristics. And some of that might play out on a little less of some features and a little bit more of something else. In the case of, in what you heard from Norrie, as we go further into the Design Excellence Project, it is more about, you know, our natural setting and our relationship to that. And maybe it's a little bit less about the corporate color. Now, the corporate color can still be there up to an extent, you know, and these amendments work in the ability to have thresholds on what we think about that extent. So, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to kind of dovetail on a few other things and say that it is more than the Verizon. I think it was a pretty strong message when we started the growth policy, to think about who we are and how we tie that to building development and building design.
Thank you, Lavelle. I'll add my comment. So I have two specific amendments I'd like to make to these amendments, which we can get to later if we, you know, if we want to move in that direction. But, you know, Lavelle just mentioned kind of secrets of a successful community. You know, to that point, Norrie, Winter &amp; Company, you know, they did the Design Excellence Project in Bozeman, and I mean, it's not, correlation is not causation, but Bozeman's clicking along at 20% growth a year while Missoula's stagnating around 5. So, you know, I think there is something to be said here around, you know, kind of crafting an image. Obviously, we don't want to be Bozeman because we are Missoula, we are different, but I think there is a genuine effort from, you know, kind of the people of Missoula to decide what that looks like. I think what I do like about this is that it does push a lot more responsibility onto Design Review Board, which is a citizen volunteer board, just like this one. So if design was something that you really were for or really against, I mean, that would be an opportunity for you. And so, you know, and in many ways, like, you get the government you show up for, you know what I mean? And so at this point, people that really care about design are showing up to, you know, these public hearings and really providing input onto this. So I respect that. I think there has been a lot of work done, you know, from a grassroots perspective to collect people's opinions about this. With that said, you know, I do have two amendments. One is number 25, the first one. I, you know, I don't, I don't believe that exposed light bulbs are a negative, or, I mean, they certainly can be a negative addition to a building, but it's done right more often than it's done wrong, I think. And, you know, Lavelle and I discussed this last week, you know, Whitefish has a lot of this, and it looks very charming. I think about the Roxy Movie Theater, you know, I think about these places that, you know, really bring pedestrian-scale lighting kind of down to the building. And so, you know, we already have regulations around tube lighting, which, I've been to the Neon Museum in Las Vegas and learned a lot about, you know, tube lighting and have kind of a newfound respect for it. So that's too bad. But that being said, you know, I think there's a lot of cool, like, updated, new industrial looks around exposed light bulbs that I think we don't want to kind of pigeonhole ourselves in saying it's going to look bad. I think it can look great. So I would actually strike number 25 from the record, or from the proposal. And then my other amendment was under section 26, prohibited signs and sign characteristics, letter L, exposed string streamers or lines of light bulbs used to outline windows, doors, eaves, cornices, and other architectural elements. You know, I understand the intent there because that's exactly what happened with the Verizon Building, which I find appalling, but, you know, again, this is something that can be done right, and it can look really, really sweet. I mean, this would really, you know, it would brighten someone's window. I also see it as sometimes, we're seeing it right now, if you go onto Third Street, Noteworthy is in the process of submitting a design package, and because of their location, people would miss them if they didn't have string lighting outside of their windows. That's an example of them doing it right. And so I would hate for them to, you know, not be allowed to do that if they needed to. So my, I guess my pushbacks on this are related to lighting, and it would be those two specific things. Otherwise, I'm in favor of this proposal.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I think that what you thought were two amendments are actually just the one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for clarity's sake. I think that 25 is letter L.
25 is letter L? What do you mean?
It says.
She's talking about 26L.
Yeah, I was thinking 25 and then 26L.
So.
But it's the reference to 27530.
Oh, that's right.
There's, there's.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
Two amendments for one section.
Yep.
To save space in those kinds of things.
Yeah, so it is just the one, then.
I just want to make sure.
I'm glad you pointed that out. Actually, now that I read the numbers, you're right, it's the same one. So there you go. So I guess I would move that we remove section L from 20.75.03.0M.
Well, can I ask a question? People managed to find Noteworthy when it was the food bank for the last 25 years. Why do they have to have string lights? And I guess I want to know whether these lights are allowed to stay on at night? Or they, is that like the, if I, is that, do you know?
I don't know that specific question. I mean, the Missoula Food Bank did have signage.
Yeah, but didn't have string lights. So what I, I do worry a little bit about too much light at night, and so I don't know if this, if we take this out of there, or actually, if we leave it in there, can they, no, this would prohibit it, sorry. If they're, if people are allowed to do this kind of lighting that you think could be cool, which I could, I could agree with, are they able to have it on at all times?
I'm assuming that falls under the night sky thing? I don't know. Jen, can you speak to that?
That's kind of where I would guess as well. Zoning is not going to prohibit them at this point from being on.
Oh, right, because this would be just zoning. So if they, so if we prohibit them from having it, they certainly can't have it on at night.
I guess.
So if we allow them to have it, whether they can have it at night is a separate question, then.
Well, and as written, it's not going to apply to residential areas if that matters to you.
No, doesn't matter. I mean more, you know, if Noteworthy or whatever.
Okay.
Not to pick on anybody.
Lighting the day isn't as effective either.
Lighting in the day? Well, I don't know. I mean, so what's the purpose of this lighting? Why would we need string lights on a.
Because, because we get dark at 4 o'clock in the winter, and it's still daytime, right? And so that bring, I mean, I'll give you another example, the Mercantile downtown, they, in the wintertime, have lighting, string lighting on the inside of their building, you know, to demonstrate that they're open and it's 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
The Mercantile?
The wine merchant, sorry.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean? Like, so there are other reasons. I just think that that's like a small aesthetic thing that shouldn't be in the zoning regulation.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
Yes, Peter.
So one of my concerns is I'm okay with handing over part of our responsibilities to the Design Excellence Group, okay? I'm thinking about that. There's going to be a group, and like you mentioned, I think you worded it really carefully and smartly, that there's going to be a group of people who are interested in design excellence in the community. And first thing we ask then as a group is about very specific lighting, okay? So I don't think that would be the purview of the Planning Board, the Planning Commission anyway. I mean, because how are we going to say, I guess we can say this particular area cannot have lighting under these circumstances for dark night rules. But if it's up to the owner and he sells a place or it becomes something else and doesn't, I don't know if you see my issue, but we already have issues of trying to pass on responsibilities or lose responsibilities between one group and another. How are we going to, how does the city make decisions like this? If we don't do it, does Design Excellence do it?
Yeah, I mean, given, given this, yeah, I mean, this is kind of a transactional question for Jen, like, how does this move through the process, right?
Yeah. And I see it kind, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not being very clear, because I'm not sure I understand. But I'm concerned about the fact that I think there are going to be slips between the cup and the lip.
Between what?
The cup and the lip. It's an expression. The teacup up to your lips.
So, so Peter, I think Jen can probably speak to this a little bit, but this is basically pushing a lot of, you know, the responsibility then, because this now becomes part of the zoning code, it now becomes part of the responsibility of the zoning officer to move the things through Design Review Board, or if it was conditional use, then, you know, Planning Board or whatever.
Okay.
So you don't have to worry about not seeing everything that comes across our desk.
Got it. That helps.
We have very competent staff to help us.
Oh, no, I know. Didn't mean that.
Other questions? Yes, Mike?
My personal opinion on this whole thing is, is that I think it's a very broad stroke to the, if I look at the city of Missoula, I see many different things. I mean, you know, it's like I can drive down Reserve, and that's an entirely different Missoula than driving downtown. And so making these regulations for the whole thing just doesn't seem right to me. One of the things that I think about is, is that Reserve is 93, so people coming up the Bitterroot, going on up to, say, the Flathead or whatever, they go up along through there, and I think it's great that they can see a sign that says McDonald's that they recognize, or they see a sign that says Home Depot or whatever. And so I just don't see that changing all these signs to make them all look like one area all the same is a good idea. Just doesn't, just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I looked at, like I said, I just look at Missoula and I see a whole bunch of different areas, and we're going to make them all look alike, and I don't think we can, and I don't think we should.
Would staff like to comment on that?
I think in part you have to, you go with what you feel, but when we look at the entire city, we also want to be focused on, you know, characteristics and an identity that is important for all. that is important for all, and think about placemaking along all places in the city. Especially, you know, we've had a little bit of a discussion about corridors, especially those primary corridors. But, I, you know, I think you want to also perhaps consider, there is still going to be variety, and there is still going to be elements of corporate reflection. There is uniqueness in every logo and trademark, and that will still be there. There will still be, you know, extent of wall sign that is measured. There will still be trims and canopies. There will be some degree of moderate. There may not be an entire wall or an entire building that represents a sign, and if you took the applied actual logo off, it would still look like that building. And that was the interest, so that the sign is subordinate to the building and not the other way around. And I think you can still see a lot of uniqueness and variety around the city, even with applying that.
Stephanie?
I actually, I just have a question. Does, actually, a couple of things. Question for you, Laval, is, is there a place within the Design Review Board process for them to make an exemption for, I believe my understanding is that there is, that there's something that's of superior design, or something that they can make that exemption if there's, like, a really cool idea for something that does involve sort of the building looking like a sign, but it's, works within the, I don't know. I'm thinking of, like, Western Cider, for instance.
Is there, there's, Jen's turning pages.
Okay.
The comprehensive sign package.
Okay.
That is the, has been the approach to come forward with varying. Now, there's the DRB just as a whole, right? And the approach that we're proposing here in the measurement thresholds has to do with, I think it's trying to reflect what we heard from the community and the design excellence, which is, try to rest some of these decisions with the administration, with the staff, so that it can be expedited. And, you know, there's going to be a point where you know, and then there's going to be some places where it's challenging. And the idea is to fall back on the Design Review Board as needed by either the applicant or the staff to get additional call on it. And that's what is like a consistent approach between what we were talking about in the Design Review Excellence Project and this. So, yeah, you know, the point is, when you are varying and you're making a unique case, that you can do that to the Design Review Board.
Great, thank you.
Laval, can you give us an estimation of, you know, I think, I think you're right. I think the majority of, especially the corporate packages have come in as these kind of comprehensive design packages or sign packages. But can you give us the cost, and I know this is almost impossible for you at this point, but like, I'm just thinking of, like, the mom-and-pop shop that wants some variance from what the design standard requires, let's say, on South Higgins or something. And, you know what I mean? Like, I don't want this also to be so onerous, you know, because it's easy to just think of the corporations, right? They're the easiest examples. They're also the ones that are, you know, they can afford the changes. But I'm thinking, you know, to your point, Western Cider, you know, has Western Cider written on their wall, and, you know, like, that's their building, and it's very cool. And so, I would worry that this process through Design Review Board becomes too expensive, essentially.
Or is that addressed, too, through the option to just go right to staff? That was being proposed as amendment.
Right. So, can you say that in the mic?
Oh, sorry, I didn't. Or is that addressed, too, by the, what you were talking about, the sort of proposed that you guys had and blew up there of the option to go through staff rather than the Design Review Board?
The first extent is, you know, if you're, if you're looking at up to moderate, if you're trying to make a determination, we want to try to get as much of that done by staff before having to go to the DRB. Jen was just looking to see if she had any information about the costs and...
I'm sorry, I don't, I could try and look on the Internet if you want.
That's okay. I just, I worry that, I don't, I don't want something like signage to be so onerous for a mom-and-pop shop that it would prohibit mom-and-pops from being able to have storefronts. Yes, Andy?
I guess to add to that question, that was one of the points I brought up, is, I believe that this is a more stringent sign code. I also think that there's a fair amount of variances that either are taking staff time or come to DRB for review. We just talked about an ordinance where we were trying to streamline, because it was costing staff $3,000 to do conditional use on ADUs. And I would contend that these kind of back-and-force were probably just as expensive, and if they go out into the third-party consultant work, they're probably spending north of easily five grand, I would sure bet, to go through a DRB process to go through this. So, we're putting in an ordinance that's going to be more stringent, that's going to require more staff time and more cost, I think. I don't think there's any way around that. Do you disagree?
I think that the approach for the building as sign, where we want to rest as much of the decision with the staff as possible, I mean, and that's the new component here, is, will, will help to save that cost and be more expedient. But it is a new approach. There are other things that we have under the special sign review that goes to DRB, which has always gone to DRB, and we didn't enter into, should that be adjusted at all? You know, we were really kind of focusing on the building as sign piece.
Well, I'm not sure I got an answer, but I said on the Board of Adjustment, city and the county, done on both, and a ton of the applications you always see is sign. Every time. The city builds a structure, they can't comply with the sign ordinance. They come in and go through a public forum. The parking garage, great example across from FIB. So, whenever you have an ordinance that you're constantly asking for variances to, or constantly leaving in from, I think you need to ask yourself the question, is it the right ordinance?
And I do think we do some of that. I mean, just the year and a half ago, or no, a year ago, we came with sign amendments, and we struck a height restriction in many districts that was 22 feet, because on practice, it had been coming to the DRB and being approved. So, when we are collecting common things, I mean, we haven't gone so, I guess we haven't done a comprehensive look back at all the sign sizes to, you know, look for a pattern that might be a task that we do someday. We just, we haven't done that yet, to see if there's some patterns of common questions and things that get approved. But we noticed height seemed to be one of them, and we brought that to the board, and we changed it.
I understand and respect that, and I voted against that at that time, as I recall, and was not in support of that. But that being said, if there's 10 restrictions and you just removed one, but you add five, I don't know that there's a gain. So, that's all I...
Other comments from Planning Board?
Yeah, you did, you did address all the requests for variances on the signs, and that was good. I'm just going to bring up for the whole thing one more time. I hate to repeat myself, but every, if you have rules that you have to interpret, every time you apply them, it gets, it's interesting, and you're going to be leaving it up, you know, building graphics and building color is going to be subject to interpretation. I mean, there's some wording in here that says the graphics are in congruent with the zoning, which, you know, whatever that means. You know, zoning should apply to building codes and that sort of thing. So, I understand all the work that went into it, and I understand why you're trying to do it, but it just seems like it's, there's too much left for interpretation.
Other comments?
Well, what would be the alternative? Otherwise, you'd get so prescriptive, you'd go crazy. And, you know, so, I mean, we either have to allow some interpretation and flexibility, and we're talking about, in essence, something that's aesthetic, so it's going to be somewhat qualitative. And I personally would rather have people having to have these things reviewed for that than not, right? Even if it's going to ultimately be some subjectivity involved, I think that, I'm not sure how you would escape that without becoming so prescriptive, then you'd really, it'd go the other way. Maybe you can help.
Well, we have ordinances on sign size, we have lighting ordinances. So, it's not as if you can just put something up and put a sign up as big as you want and light it the way you want to now, you know, there's already some restrictions on that. I guess that's the only answer, yeah.
Laval, did you want to add something?
I would say that there's a component of this that is actually pretty black and white. That is, you know, we ask for certain things to be submitted that we are going to, that are going to be used to help gauge these thresholds. And that's stated in the code. That is the logo, trademark, corporate colors. I mean, it's, there's, those are the key things. So, that helps to focus us in on how is that reflected out or used in this building design.
Yeah, I just want to add, I don't have a problem with, you know, there being prescriptive and interpretive design standards. I mean, this is a community that's growing, it's going to change, and we need the flexibility to be able to say that, you know, to be able to shift, you know, with the market and shift with kind of the changing aesthetics of the world. I understand that can be frustrating to developers, I understand that it can be, you know, potentially onerous, but I also think that this is one of those key moments in the city's history when we're going to decide what it's going to look like in 30 years, just much like they did, you know, back when it was founded. They decided to do a Main Street, and they decided to do these things, and now we celebrate that. I mean, we have to think about this as, in a more global way. And so, I very much foresee that the Design Excellence Project will evolve, and we'll be seeing building as a sign come up again with some adjustments and some changes, just like we do with the zoning. So, that's my two cents. Stephanie?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody for this really lively discussion, and I've gotten some answers that have helped me feel much more comfortable with supporting these amendments, too, mostly because I want people to drive through Missoula, even if they're passing through and know they're in our town, and I want them to have a sense of our place and what we are here. But I would like to revisit the idea of the amendments to the lighting, because I think that having good and artful lighting can help to encourage people to do more walking, to get out of their cars and to visit places, and to feel more safe in doing that. And I like to see more people being active and walking in our communities and in our shopping areas. And so, I would be totally in support of taking that part out of it, but I do think, you know, to me, this just is, we have regulations on what the size of signs can be, and if the whole building is functioning as a sign, then that's part of that size thing, too. So, I think, I think that the other thing that's helped me in making that determination for myself was just understanding a little bit more about the Design Review Board process, and that that is, you know, it's not the same as putting it in park staff hands, for instance, how we were dealing with it before. We're putting it in the hands of another citizen body. So, I think that that's, that's a key distinction there for me as well.
Other comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the recommended changes regarding signing, building as a sign, and that with the exception of 20.75.030L on page 24, drop, the proposal is to drop that. Can I do these together like this? Is it okay?
I think that's...
Okay. At 10 of 10, we can do it together, right? So, I'd like to move these proposed amendments with the exception of L on page 24.
Is there a second? Peter has a second. Any further discussion on the motion as it stands? Okay, let's do a hand vote on this one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six, pro, six ayes. Thank you for doing both. And all of those opposed, nay, and lift your hand, please. One, two, three. Okay, moving right along, folks. Thank you for your patience. We have tourist home amendments next.
Could I ask that maybe this would be our last one for tonight? If, I mean, I just, in terms of the total time, I personally, I have to work tomorrow.
Me, too. Let's see how long this one takes. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Proposed amendments to the tourist home section are in number 33 and 34, and they're clarifying that a proposed tourist home is not required to notify surrounding neighborhoods if proposed in a non-residential district. And this amendment is based on a zoning officer opinion created after conversations with city council. A second amendment will change the calculation method for neighborhood notification to be one parcel deep rather than a fixed distance of 150 feet, requiring the public to research ownership of parcels with 150 feet of the proposed project has proven difficult and time-consuming, and reducing the area to be notified will make it easier for the public to comply with the regulations and still inform surrounding neighborhoods, surrounding The first amendment requires notification of residents one parcel deep around the proposed tourist home in residential districts. And a new subsection C is added, requiring the city send a follow-up letter to adjacent parcel owners and residents confirming the tourist home has been licensed. And this amendment is added to be consistent with notification requirements for accessory dwelling units and to address council members' concerns regarding notice to surrounding So, you've seen this diagram before, and it will be included to help explain which parcel should receive notification regarding a new tourist home. And again, they're the same as the notification areas noted earlier in the ADU discussion. Comments for tourist home amendments include Councilwoman Jones, who suggested a two-step notification process for tourist homes. That would include the applicant notifying surrounding properties about the proposed project at the beginning of the process, and requiring the city follow up with a second notification to surrounding neighborhoods once that tourist home is licensed. And Councilwoman Hess was in agreement with those same comments, and as you can see, we did include that process in our recommended changes. That concludes tourist homes.
Thank you, Jen. I see no public, so I will open, close a public hearing and open it up to staff, or I'm sorry, to Planning Board members. Any comments or questions? Yes, Peter?
Is the requirement's recommended onerous, the second notification for tourist homes?
No.
Okay.
Yes, Vince?
Do you know the operating process involved? What that costs, or is it, is there a chance that a tourist home would be denied based on neighbor feedback? I'm sort of wondering, almost...
So, I can answer that, actually. I just went through this permitting process with the city for my tourist home. And so, it costs $50 for the first year, and 28, every year after that for your permit. Your permit can be denied thereafter if, not if there's a, like, neighborhood complaint, but if there are, like, police complaints, you know, like, if the cops get called to your property, or if, you know, you're caught doing something illegal or something like that. So, as it stands, it's not like all the neighbors can come out and say, "We hate it, you can't do it," at this point. But again, if you guys remember, and, you know, there's a lot of new members here, we did tourist home regulations just last year, so this is still super new. My concern with this, and what Councilwoman Hess was trying to do, is, I think, you know, you guys mentioned that it's not onerous to you to do that second notification. There are a lot of tourist homes registered with the city now, and so, I just, you know, if you guys say that's, it's not onerous, it's fine, the city, you know, Ben Brewer and folks would be fine moving forward with that. I respect that, that's great, but I would say, at some point, you know, the department's going to have to make a call there as to, you know, how much notification is too much notification, given the amount of tourist homes.
We did have that conversation with Denise Alexander, who's the supervisor... We did have that conversation with Denise Alexander, who's the supervisor of that section, and the notification would be a one-time situation. When the tourist home is licensed, then that second, that second notification will go out saying that it's been completed.
Okay, so it's just like the first time, essentially?
Right.
Okay. Okay? Other questions? Comments?
So they're just, neighbors are just being notified?
Correct.
They don't have any opportunity to submit input or anything?
Correct.
Particularly to anybody that's going to listen.
Yeah, and I think, I think the rationale behind the notification is to provide contact information in case of emergencies. So that your neighbors would know, oh, so-and-so owns that house and this is their contact information.
Yeah, I mean, it's too bad we have to regulate something like this. People, you know, hopefully would talk to their neighbors, but it seems reasonable that people know that you have a tourist home, a tourist facility in your home. Seems okay to me. Is it, is it overreach?
I think it makes sense. I mean, depending on the situation, you'd want your neighbors to know that you might have other people staying at your house who might be going in.
Coming in, yeah.
Right, so they don't call the, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense. It doesn't seem particularly onerous. I like that this, the way it's written, the 150-feet rule does seem really confusing. So I think this is, it seems like it simplifies an area that needed, needed it.
Yeah, Laval?
So this is a thing that the council or the Land Use and Planning Committee kind of kept coming back to, was the notification piece. And we tried to capture the, the conversation in committee in the explanation that's in the code, or in this ordinance. And this is what they're, you know, they're interested in your conversation about it, that balance. You know, their, their points were like, well, there's, we, we want to impress and express the interest of that applicant reaching out to the neighbors around them. So they really valued that piece of it. But they also, you know, appreciated the, the notion of, you know, the standard practice of a regulation and a letter that would come from the office, and I think that's where Denise is coming from too. We do this all the time, we know it will get done, there won't be questions about the who got contacted or what. So there were, I guess you could say, you know, pros and cons of both aspects, and then you got this suggestion of what if you put both of them together and you do both? We feel like that will cover, and we do it often, the assurance that things are messaged back out to the people in the official way, and it still reaches out to the residents in adjacent property areas. So they were interested in that balance, and I think they were interested in your conversation on what you thought about that.
Yes, Andy?
Could they propose a sign of adequate color and size in the front yard?
Signage is not allowed, Andy. You remember that from tourist home regulation.
Yeah, red lights, you're on cam.
So...
The notification would be required, like, 47, 37, 5, 4, 5.
That was requested, actually, in the last hearing. Yeah, other comments? Yes, Vince?
I mean, I guess the, I have my, a question is, is this type, this two-part notification? Is this, is there another, is this common for building permits, zoning changes? It almost seems like this might, and I could be wrong, but we're requiring more notification for the tourist homes than we do for seemingly bigger things.
I believe this is a unique situation in the zoning code, yes. In, in far as building code and, you know.
That's a great question. One of my perspectives on this is, because this, the permitted tourist homes regulation is so new, that this is like, one piece to see how it goes, and then I foresee that this notification requirement will come back in future edits. Or adjusted somehow. I mean, I don't know. I know, you know, they're, the city's also in kind of a data collection mode, you know, they're trying to see what works, what doesn't, how people react, what will change. So, yes.
The last time this came up, it was decided that there really wasn't a need for the registration and doing all this because they were basing it on complaints. And I think they had like two complaints over a period of, I don't know, five years or so. It was a long period of time, there were so few complaints. Why now?
You mean the notification perspective?
Yeah, well, yeah, why all of this? I mean, you know, I mean, tourist homes were doing absolutely fine, obviously, while we had a couple complaints, but it was, I mean, it was very minimal, so why are we doing it now?
I don't have a background on that, do you?
Not much, I mean, hi.
I think that the pace of tourist home registration is increasing, and there is a relationship of this to state requirements for licensing, and even if it's for a few or it's for a lot, I think we're looking at the, the regulations can help to ensure there's the awareness as well as the, you know, they are operating in permitted places, and then also with a connection to health department to make sure they're done safely. So it brings it out, I think, in a more open and city way.
Other comments or questions? Otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
So who's going to enforce it?
Enforce which part?
Well, if, if we have these regulations that they have to meet, if they don't meet those regulations, who's going to enforce that and make sure that they do?
We have code enforcement officers, and we also have the, I can't quite remember how the notification piece was written, but I think they're, somebody's supposed to submit how they notified and who they notified. And then the follow-up letter is done by us, so that's us enforcing ourselves. We have code enforcement staff that would look at these things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Other comments, questions? Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the tourist home amendments regarding the calculation required to notify area owners for a tourist home project as proposed.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stephanie. Any discussion? Okay, I will do just a voice vote this time around. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
One nay. The motion passes. Okay, folks, it is 10:05. I, I think at this point, this is where we're going to stop for tonight.
Yeah, we have seven more.
Yes, we have seven more, and so, Laval, we'll see you next time.
Is that going to create a problem for you? Because otherwise we'll be here all night if we try to get through all of these.
The pace does pick up, but that's fine, it's up to you. We do have to, you have to continue it to a date certain.
Oh, we do. Okay, so Heather, what is our next Planning Board meeting and what's on the agenda for that one?
The next Planning Board meeting would be April 17th. I need to look up what's on that agenda real quick.
Laval, do we have to make a motion to, to basically...
I think that would be good.
That would be better, okay.
Be on the safe side, yeah.
Okay.
Continue the hearing to the next...
Planning Board meeting, okay. Yeah, so, what does it need to be?
That be...
Yeah, that we move to, to continue the public hearing on April 17th.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to move to continue the public hearing on April 17th to address the seven remaining items.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Peter. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay, thank you, Andy. All right, so let's just quickly go through the agenda here. We do not have any committee reports, there is no old business. Other comments from Planning Board members? Andy, did you want to unleash one?
I did express my displeasure with the Design Excellence Project and the Design Review Board, and the public comment closed on it today, so I guess I'm going to make some public comment. I feel that that document is largely an overlay that I printed it off today, it was about the document this day, and we just saw the things we went through tonight and maintenance update titles one. I feel this document is a large duplication of what the zoning, or certainly money being expended in time, that I think really needs to be evaluated. I also find it striking that the front page of Missoula today, opposed the library project is one of the primary corridors that this Design Excellence Project is on track to be marginally approved, and I find a hard way how it even applies, particularly with the particular element of utilization of natural materials, which they said use stone and brick. And the deal is about how open it is, it's glass and steel. So it's very interesting to me to find an article about a $35 million infrastructure investment in downtown Missoula that has no records or compliance, little, lacks a large compliance of the state. I'm not in support of the project at all, I need you to terminate.
Other comments from Planning Board? Okay, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.